Good morning, everyone. I want to call to order the March 22, 2023, meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. I will note for the record that all three commissioners are here in person. And so let's get started. Commissioner Thomas?
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. Should we go ahead and take care of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation in observance of Women's History Month, whereas courageous women have called not only for the absence of oppression, but for the presence of opportunity. They have demonstrated for justice, but also for jobs, ones that promise equal pay for equal work. And they have marched for the right to vote, not just so their voices could be heard, but to ensure that women could have a seat at the head of the table.
And with grit and resolve, women have fought to overcome discrimination and shatter glass ceilings. And after decades of slow, steady, and determined progress, they have widened the circle of opportunity for women and girls across our country. Women of every age, race, class, sexual orientation, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and of Monroe County in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major movement for progressive social change.
We are grateful for each member of Monroe County Women's Commission, and we appreciate their fight for women's equality. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim our observance of March 2023 as Women's History Month in Monroe County, proclaim this 22nd day of March, 2023.
Thank you. And now we're ready for department updates. And I believe we have Ms. Ford here from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Lori is at a public health leadership conference in Indianapolis. That's why I'm filling in. So this update will be short and sweet. COVID cases and wastewater concentrations continue to decrease according to the Indiana COVID-19 dashboard. Indiana influenza levels remain at minimal levels. And as a reminder, we do still have COVID, the home COVID tests available for pickup Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:00 at the Health Department building. And our public health clinic located on Miller Drive has vaccines available for all ages. You can call 812-353-3244 to make an appointment. And apparently there is a new combination test for flu and coronavirus coming out. We do not have that yet. So as soon as it's released, we'll have more information.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you.
You already answered my one question about the new test. So thank you. Thanks for coming over. Is there any other department that has an update for us? There's one panelist that has their hand raised. I don't know what that's about. Oh, good morning, Ms. Nestor Jellin.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do have one update for you, and that's in regards to our focus group meetings that we're going to be hosting for the County Development Ordinance tomorrow evening. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to review the MonroeCDO.com website, which is a great resource for anyone wanting to get the latest updates on the County Development Ordinance. So as I stated, we'll be having three different focus groups tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM via Zoom only. So there'll be three groups that you may join, one of three, since they'll be held concurrently. The first group will be the Economic Development Group. The Environmental Review Group will be the second group. And then the Construction Review will be the third group. We have included now links to the PowerPoint presentations that staff will go over in the beginning. And then there'll also be guided questions for you to look at under these PowerPoints. So I clicked on each one of these just as an example. It'll bring you to the document center. Go ahead and open that up. And you may look at these to get an idea of which focus group might be best fitting for what you're wanting to get out of the sessions. There's also the Zoom links directly below so that you do not have to RSVP ahead of time. You can just go ahead and click the link to the group that you would like to join. Just make sure that you're going to the right Zoom room for the group that you would like to attend. Following these meetings, we will go ahead and post the recordings of these Zoom meetings on the website so that if you wanted to attend multiple meetings or understand what was discussed, you'll have an opportunity to review that at a later time. So that's all I have. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer that for you.
Thank you. I was taking notes here. Commissioner Jones, any comments?
Sorry. Yeah, just that hopefully as many people as possible will participate in this. This is a process that's much more successful if the citizens actually get involved.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions. Just to note that the members of the planning commission are going to be split up among the groups. So we'll be attending.
And what was the website again where people can find things?
Yes, so MonroeCDO.com.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining us today. Seeing no other department with an update, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. There's a limit of three minutes per speaker. And please state your name, as well as whether or not you're a resident of Monroe County. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll write myself down as I introduce myself. I'm Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and I am a citizen of Monroe County. Tonight, I just want to, this morning, I just want to thank everybody who attended our elect connect last night, which was our city council edition. We have municipal elections here in the incorporated area of Bloomington. And I encourage people to go out and vote May 2. Very few people decide these elections. We had a great turnout, including some county council members, Kate Wilts, Jeff McKim, and Trent Decker, who attended. And the cross pollination was much appreciated because all of these elections are connected in a way of collaboration and working together. We had a similar event last October for state and county elections as well. This brings me to our next elect connect, which is our mayoral forum, which is April 10. That is a Monday at President's Hall, which is in Franklin Hall at IU. There are a lot of mayoral forums. But I would encourage you to attend ours. I think we have the best location. It is a community event, not just for chamber members. We have hors d'oeuvres, a cash bar on hand. That'll be at 5:30 for the doors opening. 6:30 is when the forum begins. And the last plug is our next community conversation, which is also open to the public, working better together. Commissioner Givens will be on that panel. And we're going to be looking at ways where we can kind of have a collaborative environment that can get things done. And we've seen that on multiple levels within county, within city government, working kind of in a collaborative terms where we're doing our best effort for the greater cause and seeing where we are on this compared to other counties. What can we do? What can work better? That is going to be Tuesday, April 4 at Fountain Square Ballroom. We'll have doors open 11:00 for that one. And the program begins at 11:50. So that's Tuesday, April 4 on that community conversation at the Fountain Square Ballroom. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. And then we'll get to Mary Morgan virtually after this.
Good morning, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Tammy Wykel-Cassidy, and I'm a citizen here in Monroe County. And the reason that I'm here today is I just wanted to give a thank you and a shout out to the folks at the Monroe County Soil and Conservation Office. I recently found out about them when I was attending a meeting here. And they were very informative. I spoke to Martha Miller and Hannah Martin there. And they are just really great to work with. I just would encourage members of the public who think they have a problem with invasive species or want to be aware more about the watershed and things like that. They're just, they were really great people to work with. And last weekend, they had their state meeting. And there were all kinds of resources in the room of folks from all over the state who can help you. So I just appreciate their service that they're providing to the public and wanted to let everyone know. Thank you.
Thank you for the nice ad. Okay. Can we please admit Mary Morgan virtually? She needs to be unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I'm Mary Morgan with Heading Home of South Central Indiana. For those of you who don't know, we're a relatively new regional collaborative initiative to strengthen housing security and to make homelessness rare, brief, and nonrepeating. It's a partnership. And one of our most important partners is Monroe County. We really appreciate your support, and particularly for Heading Home Advisory Council members Penny Givens and Angie Purdy. But I'm here to give you just a brief update and some of our efforts to decrease veteran homelessness. In January, we started a new approach to addressing veteran homelessness. It's called case conferencing, and it's a process where different agencies come together to meet and basically problem solve how to move homeless veterans into housing. It's a new approach because I think it's the first time when we've had such a broad coalition of agencies and others helping with this. It includes veterans, I'm sorry, it includes shelters like Beacon and Wheeler Mission and New Hope for Families. But perhaps most importantly, it also includes members who work to provide resources for veterans, including Volunteers of America, the HUD Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing folks. And of course, Heading Home is involved as well. But I wanted to give a special shout out to one of our partners in this veteran case conferencing, Steve Miller, who is with the Monroe County Veterans Affairs Department. He has been such a fantastic partner. He's really important, in part because some veterans don't feel comfortable approaching services, service providers. But because Steve is so accessible and is a peer, he's very helpful in connecting folks to services. Since January, 12 veterans have been housed. We currently have nine homeless veterans. And we're convinced that this is a process that we'd like to extend to other populations of folks who are homeless. And we are working very hard to do that. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that and to thank you again for your support. For anyone who wants to learn more about Heading Home, our website is headinghomeindiana.org. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Do you want to say anything about this?
I am just so impressed by what's been accomplished so far. And this certainly sounds like an approach that should actually accomplish something and hopefully can be applied in some other areas.
Mr. Thomas?
This is really great news. And thank you, everyone, for your efforts, especially Mr. Miller and our Veterans Service Office.
Mr. Miller is certainly passionate about helping veterans. We're very, very lucky to have him and have him on board. And it's encouraging to hear others acknowledge his hard work. So thank you, Ms. Morgan, for sharing that with us today. And kudos for getting 12 veterans housed since the beginning of this year. Heading Home is using what's called a Built-for-Zero approach, where they work with subgroups of people that are unhoused homeless. And veterans was the first subgroup that's chosen. And I know they're already scratching their heads about which group to focus on next. So they're not sitting on their laurels whatsoever. So thank you very much for all the hard work. And this is a regional approach that's being taken. I want to add that. It's not just Monroe County. So it's really an amazing kind of process. So is there anyone else that wishes to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
I move approval of the minutes from March 8, 2023.
Second. Thank you. Is there any correction or addition? I found one scrivenor's error, and it's already been taken care of. So I appreciate the work of the staff. All those in favor of approving the minutes from March 8, 2023 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next up?
I move approval of the claim stock and accounts payable March 22, 2023, and payroll March 24, 2023.
Second. And we have Sarah here to talk to us about this.
Good morning. Accounts payable for March 22, 2023 Of that total, a few notable expenditures. First, payable to the City of Bloomington in the amount of $1,191,799.16 is for the local income tax certified shares. Secondly, also payable to the City of Bloomington in the amount of $1,333,728.58 for the local income tax economic development. And finally, payable to the Monroe County Treasurer in the amount of $1,258,202.25 for local income tax certified shares. Payroll for March 24, 2023 is $1,880,154.32. Of that amount, $1,319,236.76 is direct, and $560,917.56 is indirect.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions on these? None. None? Okay. Do we need public comment on this? Is there any public comment on either the accounts payable or the payroll? Seeing none, call for a vote on approval of the claim stock at accounts payable for March 22, 2023, and payroll for March 24, 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. I will note for the record that we have reports from both the Clerk of the Circuit Court for February and for the Treasurer, from the Treasurer for February. So now it's time for new business. We'll move on. And thank you, Sarah.
I move approval, emergency management letters of agreement for disaster response.
Second. And I believe that we have Mr. Baker here to talk to us about this item. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the Emergency Management Office has been continuing our disaster preparedness planning. And we have two agreements with two organizations within the county. One of the agreements is for structural engineering by the BFW Claim Incorporated. This agreement is for a structural engineer who is within the county in case to be used in the event of a building collapse. And then the second agreement is with Sunbelt Lentils for heavy emergency equipment. This agreement will be used to help establish contact locally in the event we need heavy equipment for emergency response, such as forklifts, generators. And these agreements are to be used as a backup plan in the event we can't have the resources we need in a timely manner. So thank you.
It's part of planning for emergencies, yes. Any comments or questions?
Just happy that you're planning on this.
Right. No questions. Thank you. Great. I can remember shortly after I was sworn in that we had a tornado come through here, and we needed some extra help, it seemed like, occasionally. So you have something to add, Ms. Purdy?
I do. I'm so sorry. Justin, can you advise what fund you're going to be paying for these expenses from if you have to use them? I understand that right now, this is just an agreement for these services. However, where do you plan to pay for the costs involved should this be required?
This will happen after a disaster. So it'll be assisted with disaster relief fund, most likely. And it'll come out of possibly County General or something like that, or a disaster planning fund.
I would recommend that we determine exactly what fund, because this is, we'll incur fees if we do have to use it. So I think that maybe you would want to approve these agreements contingent upon the determination of an actual fund, an account that would provide these payments if necessary.
So do we need to table this, or can we amend the motion?
I think you can amend the motion to add that contingency.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking that if we're in this situation, we'd already have had to issue an emergency.
Yes.
You still need to know where you're paying it from.
But at that point, we don't typically talk through funding until, I mean, it's not typical for us to, we're more focused on lives and then property second and not how we're paying for something. So.
That's why I think you need to know now, so that they can activate that appropriation.
Right. But the question is not just what fund, but I don't know that they have an appropriation anyway in their budget for any of this. So I don't know that they do.
Which is why I'm recommending that.
I understand that. I guess that's what I'm saying, is it's not just identifying a fund.
No, exactly. Correct. Thank you. Yes, it's not just identifying the fund. It's ensuring that we have a fund, an account with an appropriation so that the funds can be expended in the event of an emergency. Yes. So how about amend the motion to approve pending an appropriation by council in an appropriate fund?
I'll go ahead and make that motion to amend.
I'll second. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Any public comment on the amendment?
Commissioners, I'd like to just add that we would not go on with anything unless confirmed to you guys, confirmed by you guys.
Sure. Okay. So all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Aye. And is there any comment on the general motion? Any public comment? If not, call for a vote on the emergency management letters of agreement for disaster response. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of agreement with Malcolm Malinowski Consulting, Inc. And fund name Clerk for the Incentive, Fund Number 8899, and the amount $11,400.
Second. And we have Ms. Martin here to talk with us. Good morning.
Good morning. The Clerk's Office seeks approval of a contract with Malcon Malinowski Consulting, Incorporated. This contract provides that Malinowski will provide the Clerk's Office assistance with the requirements of the Cooperative Reimbursement Program agreements between the Monroe County Clerk's Office and the Indiana Department of Child Services, including the preparation of the annual budget addendum and monthly Title IV claims. These services will improve the recovery of Title IV expenses as it pertains to the Clerk's Office. The cost of Malinowski services is 950 per month. I have asked Matthew Lowry, the senior consultant of Malinowski, to appear this morning. So if you have any questions that I cannot answer, he'll be more than willing to assist you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
No, I don't.
None. So how long have we had a contract with the Malcon Group? Do you have any idea?
Yes, I do. We were talking about that this morning. I think we have known and been a member of this agreement for about 10 years. So we do have a great working relationship between Malinowski and the Clerk's Office.
And I know that part of this is to help recover indirect expenses. Any idea how much the county has benefited from this?
In the last three years, and I don't quote me exactly, but I think about $226,000. Is that about right?
And that's directed to the County General Fund. I'm not sure if it is used.
So it's a good thing for our county.
Thank you. Thank you. I was wondering why the Clerk's Office didn't use Dossit, which is what the courts and prosecutors, but it appears that you have this longstanding relationship.
We do. We have that phone call relationship. If we need anything, we pick up the phone, and someone on the other end answers and says, "Hold on, I'll take care of that for you." And anytime you're dealing with money, you want that direct contact with an individual.
Thank you.
And they've kept us legal, which is great.
Makes life easier, yes.
Yes, it does.
Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on approval of the Malcon-Malinowski Consulting Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Next item, please.
I move approval of amateur sports program agreement for Safe Place. Fund name Project Safe Place, Fund Number 9103, and the amount of $1,278.
Second. Thank you. And we have Ms. McCammon here to tell us about this. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cassidy McCammon, and I am the Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator for Youth Services Bureau. Amateur Sports Promotion is a third-party agency that contracts with schools to develop materials for school sporting events. In Monroe County, Amateur Sports Promotion works with Bloomington High School North, Tri-North Middle School, Jackson Creek Middle School, and Bachelor Middle School. And we will be sponsoring calendars and pocket schedules for the spring, fall, and winter sport seasons of 2023 for a total of $1,278. And Commissioner Givens, as you noticed, Bloomington High School South is not listed as one of the schools participating. I've reached out to Amateur Sports Promotion to try and see why. And I have not gotten a response yet. My guess is that they don't contract with South. But I've made it a priority to reach out to South and see if they use an outside agency. And if so, how we can contact those students.
I appreciate that follow-up. Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Well, I'm just pleased that this is happening. It'll be very beneficial.
No comments. Thank you. I will note, too, that it's not just middle school and high school kids that then see these. Oftentimes, they're younger siblings. And this is one of the ways that we reach out to people. It's about the Safe Place program, which is, I think, very important in our community. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on amateur sports program agreement for Safe Place. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of an agreement with Bloomington City Parks for Safe Place. Fund name Project Safe Place, Fund Number 9103, and the amount of $3,400.
Second. And again, Ms. McCammon.
So we work with the City of Bloomington Parks and Recreation Department to expand the visibility of Safe Place through a series of sponsorships. And this will utilize our runaway and homeless grant funding. The events that we are sponsoring this year are Summer Solstice, Glow in the Park, and Skate and Scare. And we will be also displaying two banners, one at Bryan Park and the other at the Twin Lakes Recreational Center.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Thomas? Is there any public comment on this item? I don't have any either. Again, this is a great way to get information out there, publicize it. So all those in favor of approving the Bloomington publicize it. So all those in favor of approving the Bloomington City Parks Agreement for Safe Place signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of an agreement with Effect TV for Safe Place, fund name Runaway and Homeless, fund number 8120, and the amount of $4,000.
Second.
And again, Ms. McCammon.
Last one. Our contract with Effect TV allows us to educate youth and their families about the Safe Place program while they watch their favorite shows. We specify the ads to target family-friendly TV shows. The total investment for this program is $4,000. We're putting two of that into traditional TV ads and the other $2,000 into streaming ads. The commercials are aired on channels that target youth and families, and it will be broadcasted through June through September, the times when most students are out of school.
Great. Questions or comments?
No, just once again, a great thing.
Great idea.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on Effect TV Agreement for Safe Place. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
I move approval of N.D. Change Order Number Three for Sample Road Phase One, fund name Sample Road Phase One, fund number 8161, and the amount of $127,071.40.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Ms. Ridge here. Good morning.
Good morning. This change order was to cover the cost to switch from lime to cement for stabilization. After the tests were performed on-site, it was discovered that the native soils were not suitable for the lime stabilization, would require cement to adequately stabilize the subgrade. The item is considered a participating item for reimbursement of 80%, so the local cost is 20% of the overall cost, which would be
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
I'm just really pleased that this was found in advance and you're able to make the correction before we've already put a road on unstable surfaces.
Commissioner Thomas?
I was wondering, Ms. Ridge, if you could give us an update on the two projects, Sample East, Sample West?
As soon as the plant opens, which we anticipate possibly March 27th, we anticipate them getting in there. We're finishing up some of the curb guttering, pipes, driveway approaches, then they will come in, put in the final layer of asphalt. They will stripe the road, finish the signage, and the work will do the final walkthroughs. We hope to be finished with the project maybe mid-May and be out of the way out there. So we'll probably be bringing up some final change orders. There'll be some credits, some add-ons to go through and kind of finalize this, so we'll be out of there in the next couple of months.
I know some folks are eager because there's still no signage on I-69, letting people know.
Yeah.
And I keep getting calls, and I don't know what to tell folks, so thank you.
Yep.
Mid-May, that, that sounds good, to have this done. I was, I was intrigued reading through the, the engineer's report on this that came in the packet, so thank you.
And I didn't give you all the pages, so if you have more, I can provide you with more.
My insomnia is not that bad. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the N.D. Change Order Number Three for Sample Road Phase One. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of N.D. Change Orders Number Three and Number Five with Forced Construction for Sample Road, fund name Sample Road Phase One and Phase Two, fund numbers 8161 and 8162, and the amount of $186,015.
Second.
Again, Ms. Ridge.
So at the beginning of 2022, we had agreed to pay an additional acceleration cost to get the project to intermediate HMA paving and open the road before the winter of 2023. This was in coordination when we had also agreed to a cost reduction incentive at a cost savings of $233,496.10 when the project began to build both phases in one year, kind of almost making it a wash at the time. There's a difference of $47,481.10. So the first change order in the first phase is $96,300, and then in the second phase is $89,715. So the actual, the cost reduction incentive was a credit, and then the acceleration was an add-on. So we were trying to do both of those coincide to, again, to try and make it a wash. So we ran into different instances with inflation and, and things during the project, so we're hoping in the, in the end, it is going to kind of come out of wash with both scenarios.
Thank you. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Sounds like a kind of complicated arrangement.
It has been complicated.
Commissioner Thomas?
Will this also be completed over the summer, then?
Pardon me?
This will also be completed over the summer?
Yeah, and it's, it's basically, it was something that we started. When the project was let, at, at the same time both phases were let, one contractor was awarded, so they issued the cost reduction incentive to build both phases in one year. So that's where the cost reduction came into play. But then, as we moved forward, we wanted to accelerate it, so we offered basically an incentive for the contractor to lay the intermediate for us to get that prod, to get the road opened in 2022. So we paid the additional cost to get that road opened in the fall of 2022 because we knew we had that credit upfront to help the residents get the road open.
I'm sure they appreciate it. Yes. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, call for a vote on the N.D. Change Order Number Three and Five with Forced Construction for Sample Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of an agreement, maintenance agreement with Harrowfish, Inc., for Justice Building Grease Interception, fund name County General, fund number 1,000, not to seize $5,674.50 over three years.
Second.
And we have Mr. Kreider here with us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Fleet and Facilities Manager. The grease interceptor tank at the Justice Building is currently scheduled for quarterly maintenance. The tank is filling at a rate that requires an increase in service. This request is a three-year agreement with HFI to empty the grease interceptor tank bi-monthly in an amount that will not exceed $5,674.50.
Thank you. Questions or comments, Commissioner Jones?
I do know how important it is that those grease traps are maintained, so thank you for keeping on top of that.
Commissioner Thomas?
No questions, thank you.
Just point out to the public, we're moving from doing this four times a year to six times a year, so hopefully that'll take care of any problems that might arise. Yes. Is there any comment on this from the public? Seeing none, call for a vote on the Harrowfish, Inc. Maintenance Agreement for the Justice Building Grease Interceptor. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move acceptance of the recommendation to negotiate with DLZ, Inc. regarding master plan and design for justice-related facilities.
Second.
And again, Mr. Kreider.
Thank you. The RFQ Committee met with, met on January 17th, 18th, and 19th to hear from three respondents. We want to thank these respondents who took their time to meet with us, hear from us, and share their presentations with us. They are all very capable and proficient in what they do, and I believe we all felt like any one of them could provide a facility that meets our needs, the needs of the community, is progressive in its design, supports the mental health needs of our inmates, as well as the needs of our employees, providers, and visitors, and will also allow for future flexibility in programming care and bed space. That said, one firm stood out above the rest, and that was DLZ. DLZ was unanimous decision of the committee. The formal recommendation was presented to the Commissioners on March 8th during work session. This agenda request is for the Board of Commissioners to approve entering negotiations with DLZ regarding master plan and design for Monroe County justice-related facilities.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'd just like to thank the committee for the work they put into this.
Right, correct.
Yeah, no, I, I second that. That's, it was really important work and appreciate everybody, all the vendors who, who provided a response. And, and I know that that's, it's not an easy task, and I do appreciate their discernment and their efforts at the committee.
Correct. And I think Mr. Cockrell has something to share with us.
Yeah, after their presentation last week, I think some questions have come up on, on certain aspects of this, and I just kind of wanted to clarify that. The first was the timing, you know, why are we, why are we doing this now? I would say we started this process in October. That's when we issued the RFQ. At that point in time, we thought it was important for two reasons. One, if the site that was then going through the, the city council was approved, we would be able to hit the ground running on that site. The second was, if it wasn't approved, we're going to need some expertise and some help in determining what the next site was going to be, you know, what are the parameters we're looking at. And so part of the reason to do it now is to help guide us, and I think we can, we can see that with some of the things that, that we saw on, on Monday with the, with the Community Justice Response Committee, where the, the council had, it was presented by, Mr. Iverson presented the kind of three questions at the end of it, and three criteria that they have for. One was the number of beds, which, which probably isn't as important for this discussion, but the, the second one was, they wanted it as close to services as possible, you know. What "as possible" means is, is kind of an open-ended question, and we really need some expertise in helping define on a site basis what would be possible here and what the, the expectations are. And then the third was how big the site needs to be, and that's depending on a variety of other, other factors that the, the council has, but it wasn't clearly stated there. I, I just put a point of clarification when I, when I read through that part of the, of the, I guess memorandum, you know, it, I, I wanted to make it clear that when we looked at the first site, the, on the Fullerton site, last summer, we had numerous executive sessions with both the council and the Commissioners to look at, you know, which sites, what, what terms we wanted in the agreement. And so it was really a partnership, and I, and I'm sure that came out in that document. It, it kind of read kind of differently to me, so I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that. And the council approved the, the terms for that purchase, really, a couple of times because of the price change because of a second appraisal. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was, that was clearly noted. And then finally, the RFQ process, the RFQ process isn't required statutorily or in, in any way whatsoever. It's, this is a professional service, and so the Commissioners could have entered into an agreement without any process. The process included a, a staff review, and five members, one from the Commissioners' office, one from, from our department, the, one from the maintenance, Richard Kreider, one from the contractor, who we utilized that, and then someone from the Sheriff's Department. The sheriff, he, he actually ended up, for the interview part of it, ended up designating, I think, the jail commander and the, and his assistant, which I think worked out really well and helped get a, a full review of that. That group determined the process and determining, you know, when the interviews were going to be and how they were going to be conducted. And so, and this is their recommendation to you based upon that process they chose.
Thank you. It was my understanding, too, that all of the people on the committee selected DLZ as their first choice. It wasn't that this was sort of averaged out or anything like that. This was clearly the top choice of everyone on that committee. So is there any public comment on this item? Oh, you can ask them if they'd like to. I noticed that we have two representatives here from DLZ. Would you like to share anything with, with people? And then we will get to Isabel Piedmont Smith, who has raised her hand on Zoom.
Good morning. My name is Scott Carnegie, Architect Project Manager with DLZ. I'm a local resident, live here in Monroe County, lifelong member of Bloomington, Monroe County. Just really appreciate the opportunity to bring our expertise regarding justice-related architecture to my hometown, so I'm pretty proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I really, thank you for that statement. Isabel Piedmont Smith, do you, what is it that you'd like to share with us, please? And I'll remind everyone that there's a three-minute limit.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Isabel Piedmont Smith, Bloomington City Council. And as you know, I've been following the CJRC meetings. I am concerned with hiring a firm that is known to build very large jails, and of course, Ben, it would benefit from a recommendation to build a large facility. And I wonder if there might not be a conflict of interest there. Also, I understand from some public comment the other day that DLZ actually did some renovation work on the current jail several years ago, and those renovations did not last very long. So I'd like to just know if that was taken into account in the decision-making. And I, I am trying to take notes from this meeting to understand who was on the RFQ Committee. So far, it looks like staff from the Commissioners, the Sheriff, the Legal Department, and the Maintenance Department, and I wonder if there was anybody from the County Council on the committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I can answer. There was not anybody from the County Council on, on the committee.
Nor, nor from the Board of Commissioners, right?
Yeah, yeah. It was, the only elected official possible on that committee would have been the Sheriff, and he was, he attended the first meeting or two, and then he designated his jail commander, which made perfect sense. And so I, I wasn't on the committee, so I can't, I can't answer any of the other substantive questions.
And I think also I'd point out that it is the county's decision about the size of the facility that we want, not DLZ's or any other contractor. We will listen to recommendations, but it ultimately is our decision.
And I would add that the, our contractor who has been charged with the, the maintenance of the jail, has, it's been the same contractor throughout the, throughout the times when DLZ had done those kind of works, so they would have been, they would have been well aware of, of what happened and the history there.
Right. So in addition to our own Richard Kreider, that we had Dave Gardner from ASI, who was part of this review committee.
Yeah. And, and I would just like to point out that I'm, I'm not sure that there's a conflict of interest, because any contractor would, would want to build something larger. So I don't know that there's anything special here about that. And, and it really is our decision, the size, treatment, you know, all the things that we know we want to focus on, that's, that's up to us. It's, it's not up to the contractor.
And even some of the things that we saw out in Arizona, where in the jail they put in an oversized kitchen to help in case of emergencies with the whole community. Those are the kinds of things, too, that we'll be talking about with all this. And I see Mr. Gardner has his hand raised. Please go ahead, Mr. Gardner.
I was going to talk about the, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry. I was going to talk about the recent renovation. They, they did not renovate. They actually added what we call K-block in the first floor, DLZ, and that is working perfectly. We don't have any problems or any maintenance issues with that. It was just for mental health, kind of segregation solve that we did. We did have some problems with the contractor, and I think Jeff knows all about that issues and how long it took, but as far as the work and drawing the plans, we not had any issues with that. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else, Mr. Kreider?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay, well then, if nothing else, call for a vote on acceptance of the recommendation to- to negotiate with DLZ, Inc., regarding master plan and design for the justice-related facilities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero, and thank you so much for your hard work on this.
You're welcome.
And to the entire committee. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have one appointment today.
I make a motion to appoint Don Hall, reappoint Don Hall to the Historic Preservation Board of Review. This is a three-year appointment that ends January 1st, 2026.
Second.
Thank you. I don't have any comments or questions. Do we need to listen to see if there's any comments from the public?
No.
Okay, well, then, let's go ahead and vote on the reappointment of Don Hall to the Historical Preservation Board of Review. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. I've got a long list of announcements today. I want to remind everyone about the three focus groups for tomorrow evening for the Monroe County Revision to our CDO. You can find the information that's needed for these virtual meetings at monroecdo.com. I encourage people to be involved. We have free COVID testing available at both the Monroe County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We still are accepting applications for boards and commissions, including for the Historical Preservation Board of Review. We continue to have office hours six times a month. Those are virtual. You can go onto our website, onto the calendar, and click on any of the meetings that you wish to join. These are private. We don't record them. But please, if you wish to talk with us individually, please do that. We have blood drives coming up. These are sponsored by Monroe County with, in conjunction with the American Red Cross. They're all at Ivy Tech out in Shreve Hall. We have one Thursday, April the 6th, at, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. On Friday, April the 7th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thursday, May the 11th, from 10:00 until 3:00. And Friday, May the 12th, from 1:00 until 6:00. Residents can sign up for Monroe County Alert Notification Systems. This is especially important for weather and health-related emergency updates. You can find that link at our main website at co.monroe.in.us. And we have, I remind everyone that we have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need help with utilities, rent, and emergencies. So, please contact your township trustee if you're in need of assistance. Every resident in Monroe County has a township trustee. For the residents of Ellisville and Bloomington, I will remind you that voter registration ends April 3rd, 2023. So, if you're not registered here, or if you've moved since the last election, I would encourage you to complete a voter registration form. Absentee by mail voting has already begun. The deadline for submitting a request for an absentee ballot is May the 1st of 2023, and early in-person voting begins April 4th, 2023, at Election Central at Third and Walnut. People can register online at indiana-voters.in.gov, or you can call the Clerk's Office at 812-349-2612, or visit monroecountyvoters.us for more information on this. That was pretty exhausting. Anything else to add?
No, you hit it on.
Okay, okay. We do have a work session that we need to come back for. It's 10:56. Should we, oh, I'm sorry.
It's actually just one document to sign to give our MS4 Coordinator permission to sign the annual report if you want to act upon that.
Can we do that right now?
That's the only thing I have for the work session.
Oh.
Not that I'm aware of.
So, shall we just take care of this right now?
Please.
We have before us documentation for delegation of signatory authority for Phase, is that for the Phase Two of?
It's actually, it's delegating the MS4 Coordinator to have the responsibility for the operation of unincorporated Monroe County MS4 program to hereby designated to be the authorized person for signing the, all the reports for the general permit for the stormwater quality management plan and the MS4 annual permit on your behalf.
And our MS4 operator, Ms. Kelsey Thetonia, is on Zoom. She says if we have any questions.
Yep.
So, do I have a motion?
Move that we approve this signature. How about that?
Authorization?
And I will say, you have approved it in the past, and it has been...
I don't have it in front of me.
Dave Schilling has reviewed this, and you have approved it in the past.
Perfect. There you go.
Second.
Okay. And if I understand this correctly, this does not involve spending money and things like that. It's for the permitting issues that we need to have. Ms. Thetonia, is there anything you'd like to share with us? Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Now, this is a pretty standard procedure for an MS4, and it is allowed under the state and federal regulations for you to delegate the signing of the regular reports. This is not applied to our five-year permit renewal, so I will still come to you every five years when we renew our notice of intent with the state for coverage on the state's MS4 general permit. And you will still receive updates and an annual report presentation at our regular stormwater management board meetings.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out to the public, we're not giving here the keys to the kingdom here, that's all. So, any public comment on this item? Seeing none. A call for a vote on approval of authorization for our MS4 to sign general permit reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero, and so this meeting will adjourn, and we will be back here next Wednesday, March 29th, for the next meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for everyone who's joined us today.